Going to call this meeting to order. Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone is present this evening. And on our agenda is the open forum segment, and we have no forms here. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, or I'm sorry, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
By Jonathan, second.
Second.
By Stacy. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. On our consent agenda, these are items that are routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. Under financials, we have the check wire transfer dispersment summary, wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, bank reconciliation statement for December 2019, building bond investment reports, monthly wire detail, monthly health dental wire detail, the monthly check detail, and monthly ACH detail. Approval of school board minutes for the organizational meeting on January 13th, 2020, the regular meeting on January 13th, 2020, our board joint legislative meeting on January 27th, board special meeting on January 27th, and our board study session on January 27th. Personnel, under personnel, we have the resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed, the candidates for employment, leaves of absence, and the achievement and integration plan. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Jonathan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next, we're going to acceptance of gifts. Second. Where is it? Do you have it there? Thank you. We've had donations from Jeffers Pond PTC, three different donations actually of, what is that, over three, over $3,000 for Mr. O'Hara, Ms. Hizon, Ms. Suzama, and Sean Chelsea. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So moved.
By Michael, second. By...
Second.
By Stacy. This is a roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
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 And that motion carries seven zero. Next, we'll move on to Laker Pride or Showcase, I believe.
Excellent. We have a little bit of Laker pride before the Laker Showcase. If you guys just hold off just a second, thank you. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes and salutes members of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools School Board. And we would like to join in the proclamation of proclaiming February 17th through the 21st as School Board Recognition Week. And I'd also like to share the resolution that goes with that. Whereas the Prior Lake Area Schools recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools appreciates the vital role played by those individuals as local school board members establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as the voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interest to state and federal government and ensuring compliance with state and federal law, and whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talent as advocates for our children. Whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the school district. Now therefore, let it be resolved that Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes and salutes the members of the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board by proclaiming February 17th through the 21st as School Board Recognition Week. And at this time, I would ask our school board members to stand and be recognized for the amazing role that you play every day in making sure that our mission comes to life for our students. Thank you for the time that you spend serving our school district and for always keeping what is best for children at the center of all you do. Please stand. Very much. I do have some certificates I'll give to you later as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. And now for Laker Showcase, please. We have a special event this evening, a special group. After 14 years, Greenwood Elementary, for the last 14 years, has been a neighborhood K5 elementary school within our school district. And beginning next fall, as you all know, its students, families, and staff will begin new adventures in every other school, I think, in our elementary. And tonight, we have in front of us, and you guys are going to come right front and center here, however you're going to do that, because you've got to be on camera.
Camera's up there.
These are members of our Bilt team. I mean, this is like not easy to... Wow!
Follow directions better. I think the students follow directions better.
These are members of the Greenwood Elementary Bilt Team, the Building Instructional Leadership Team. And they want to share, and I'm grateful that they are going to share some of the highlights of Greenwood over the last many years. And I know that this has been, two years at least, full of emotion for all of you. And I know last Thursday, Director Jonathan Drews and I were in the building. We had a chance to talk to some of you and your colleagues. And we know there's lots of mixed emotions, as we could absolutely understand. I'm so proud of the optimism and the teamwork and the hope and the many gifts that you are going to be spreading across our school district. And I know right now you're going to share some of those with us. So thank you. Am I starting on this side? All right.
All right. I'm Mallory Schultz, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Greenwood. First of all, Happy Kindness Week from all of the Prior Lake Savage Elementary Schools. At Greenwood, Kindness Week has evolved into a week-long celebration promoting kindness. Laker leaders make daily announcements. We offer classroom challenges, kindness-themed morning meeting activities, and promote the giant locker compliment signing event for each student. Looks like that. Greenwood has embraced Kindness Week to help promote and enforce our cares in our building.
I'm Kayla Starm. I teach first grade. So speaking of the cares, which stand for cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control, Greenwood was an early adopter of the Minnesota Department of Education Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, also known as PBIS. And our cares theme, our building web expectations, our celebrations, they're all part of this framework and have shaped our positive school culture for many, many years.
I am Tracy Magnuson. I'm the dean of students at Greenwood. Social emotional learning has also continued to evolve at Greenwood. Three years ago, our problem-solving team, under the coordination of our social worker and a veteran special ed paraprofessional, launched the Check-In/Check-out Program. This is a Tier Two, one-to-one, adult-to-student support. It provides extra structure and accountability in a student's day. They provide teacher feedback to students and parents. It ignites internal motivation. It improves student behavior, and it increases academic success. About 45 of our students have found success in our Check-In/Check-out Program over the past three years.
I'm Lisa Olson, and I teach reading intervention at Greenwood. At Greenwood, we have progressed in our analysis and use of student academic performance data. One way we do this is by using something called our grade level data pages. It's a digital warehouse of assessment scores and intervention plans. And we've used these for many years in our grade level teams. Their evolution has helped us to document and implement support for children. And these are narrowed down to the individual student level.
Mr. Drews, you had a chance to see those.
Yeah.
Came on our visit this afternoon.
It was remarkable. Yep, yep. Red, yellow, green.
Hi, I'm Michelle Perkins, fifth grade teacher. We have fun at Greenwood. From students gobbling down the hallways during turkey bingo to our staff versus kids friendly volleyball and hockey games, which we usually don't show any mercy, and I think we're, we've won every game almost, to flash mobs at our all-school meetings, to our masked and caped care superheroes, Greenwood is a special place to work.
I'm Amy Worm, and I teach fourth grade. Greenwood itself has lasting charm. And if you, or you know that if you've worked there, you've had to talk over a squeaky classroom air vent, or you've possibly met someone's grandmother or grandfather who went to Greenwood when it was a high school. You might have visited the dungeon, also known as the storage room, under the stage, entertained stories about the Greenwood ghost, waited patiently for use of the one and only staff bathroom, and you've smiled every time you heard John Larson's iconic "Have a gym dandy day." I'm Kristy Wyko, teach third grade.
Hello, I'm Molly O'Halloran. I'm the peer coach at Greenwood. When you enter the doors at Greenwood, you immediately feel the welcoming environment it provides. As one of the most recent staff members there, I felt like this from day one. Each day, it's evident that you are part of a family that supports one another so that we are able to meet the needs of all the students.
I'm Mary Jo Luthmers. I teach second grade. We at Greenwood also want to thank someone who has made a big impact on many of us throughout the years. Patrick has been very supportive and has helped us grow as teachers, pushes us to be our best selves. He always has her back, and he makes positive connections, not just with all of the students, but with the families as well. He is a big reason for the positive atmosphere and cohesive team that we have at Greenwood.
Thank you very much. I'm Patrick Lennon, the proud principal of Greenwood Elementary School. We, we want to thank the school district for the opportunity to grow so many memories as a neighborhood school K5. With the transition coming, we want to wish and going to support Laola de Lago as they transition to the building to help them make the new memories that they're going to make there. We're excited for them. It truly is a special place. I want to thank the Bilt members tonight for coming and supporting Greenwood. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to personnel items. Director Querem, you have job descriptions?
Two job descriptions. One of the things about when people leave the district through retirement or resignation, it gives us an opportunity to read the job descriptions. And there's two of them. Minor changes, just updating them. It's part of our process when people are vacating and we're looking at those. So minor changes, just an update.
Do I have a motion to approve the job descriptions for Controller and District Accountant?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Jonathan. Any comments or questions?
I just have one question. What was updated on the Controller?
The, probably the one significant thing would be that the Controller supervises the District Accountant. No.
Okay, okay. Did we always have CPA designation on there?
Not in the past.
Okay, that was another change. That's what I thought. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Unfinished business. Mr. Delwell.
Good evening, Chair Schimmick, School Board Dr. Salo. Couple of quick items tonight for update on construction. First of all, there's going to be some updated slides. The challenge we have with FLYRPA and bringing stuff to the board is a lot of times the slides are outdated. So these are actually a little bit more updated so you can see some more of the progress that we're making out there. Another thing I'd like to just talk about real briefly is we're working through extending the opening, construction opening at Twin Oaks for the classroom addition. We've had some challenges with utilities. It's a really tough site. So we're working with Dr. Edwards, and our goal now is to open that for next fall. It'll be done ahead of that, but the opening with students next fall. That was sent to FLYRPA, and now we're reporting to the school, to the full board. With that, I will start the slideshow. Okay, construction update as of today. So here's the Lake House Cafe. I think we've been in there about a month, Julie, Emily. Really successful, nice space. Kids are using it a lot. It's really, again, it's a very nice space. These are the towers, as I'm sure many of you have been through, the two towers for the high school addition with furniture and students in there now. This is some of the work going on around the fieldhouse, the staff entrance. Lot of work going out there. There's a short video clip here from the fieldhouse with Dr. Bezek.
Hey, a little field house update. It might be a little loud in here. But it's a big day. There's a pour of the floor at the field house. All over the track, four-way track. Looking out over the four courts. There are powers throughout on the concrete. Again, concrete is poured in the field house. Things are going along real well. Again, a little bit noisy, but that's the sound program. As always, having great Laker day.
That was interesting. There was 380 yards of concrete in that one single pour. It was a lot of, lot of concrete. Another, another couple shots of putting sand cushion down ahead of the concrete, and then they, as they pour. You can see the big, big equipment on the right there. That's a big power screeder. Pretty amazing what, you know, what can happen with the right equipment. Finished product there. Some more of the mechanical work inside the activity center. This is the tower outside of the media center and by the cafeteria. So you can see that scaffolding's up, block's going up. I think we have steel coming next week, Monday. Middle school additions. This is Hidden Oaks. We've seen most of these pictures, I think. The new cafeteria and multipurpose room and bathrooms. Again, this is Twin Oaks. We were, you know, going to open this in March, and we just had to relax the time schedule. Another view of Twin Oaks. This is from down by the gymnasium, looking up. So we're really going to change the, the back of this building. Some interior shots of that same addition for Twin Oaks. The, the photo on the right, that's kind of a hallway now that, that's going to help us with circulation there is one of the key features of that. You can see the skylights going in on the left. Really, it's going to be really helpful for that site. Hamilton Ridge is, it's sprouting like a flower in the spring. I mean, it's just popping out of the ground and pretty exciting. But that's, that's another example of how all sites aren't the same. You know, it's a wide-open space, and they can make a lot of work go quickly. Some of the interior shots, Hamilton Ridge. We're getting almost ready to button up the whole building and, and start interior work. This is the front entrance, and you can see the big, the tallest part of that building is the solar wall that we had talked about. That's a mechanical space on top of the gym. More interior shots. Laola de Lago at Greenwood. These are renderings. I think we've all seen these before too. But it's one of the projects that's going to heat up here. 17th, we start some of that work. Floor plans. More floor plans. And we are going to add another bathroom. So when they gave that presentation, the one-staff bathroom, we're getting two. So, and that's our, that's our presentation for this evening. Do I have any questions?
Any questions for the board? Fun to watch, fun to see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to new business, approval of an annual resolution.
As boards do every year this time of year in the state of Minnesota, there is a resolution that would direct administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. And so we're asking tonight for you to pass that resolution for us to do that work if necessary.
Do I have a motion to approve the annual resolution?
So made.
By Melissa, second. By Mary?
Sure. Yes, second.
That's okay. Does anyone have any comments or questions? This is annual, as you said. It's routine.
Routine. And it needs a, requires a roll call vote.
Yes. No one has any questions? Michael?
Aye.
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 That motion carries seven zero. We have no policy tonight. So we'll move on to administrative reports. Dr. Salo.
Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And tonight, I'd like to highlight some of the work in which we have been engaged. Each spring, we're just going to talk about the Community Crisis Response Team. Each spring, we assemble our Community Crisis Response Team comprised of administrators and community partners, including police and fire departments, sheriff's office, ambulance, Scott County Emergency Management, and Public Health Services. This year, we will host our annual meeting in June, rather than April, to give us the best opportunity to host a functional exercise on standard reunification. This meeting will represent more than a year's worth of research and planning so that we can come together and take our plan to the next level. This will be an exercise that goes above and beyond our typical tabletop exercise, where we will practice our plan at a building so we can better learn our roles in a real-life environment. So we're looking forward to that. We're getting ready to launch our third annual staff, parent, and student online surveys. The survey window this year will be February 24th through March 8th. As always, these surveys are anonymous, and we conduct them with the main goal of always collecting input from our stakeholders that will then drive our improvement. Our district has again earned the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. Our district has, has been an award recipient for the past 10 years. According to ASBO, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools earned the certificate after providing a high-quality, comprehensive annual financial report for, for the fiscal year end 2019. This award represents a significant achievement and reflects our commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting. Attainment of the certificate signifies that the district has met the level of excellence required by ASBO and is a testament to the integrity and the technical competence of our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools business staff. I'd like to congratulate Executive Director Julie Sink and her entire staff on this award. And thank you very much for your service. And lastly, I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware and extend an invitation. The Savage Police Department will be hosting Community Conversation on Race Part Two. Several of us were able to attend the event a few months ago. And this Part Two event will be this Wednesday night from 6:30 to 8:30 at Harriet Bishop Elementary. And I did have information in my newsletter about that. And I believe they are requesting an RSVP just so that they can get an ID of numbers. It would be wonderful if you could attend. Thank you.
Okay. Any administrative reports? Okay. Board reports. Enrique? Mary?
I attended the span meeting and the Eastham Night, which was incredible, at, at Westwood. That was wonderful. It was really, the kids had a great time. I also got a chance to go to Glendale and sit in a fifth grade, as well as a third grade classroom. And that was very enlightening, as well as incredible experience. So it's so nice to see little kids. And I think that's about it because we didn't have a curriculum meeting and we didn't have a FLYRPA meeting. So there's no other formal reports.
Stacy?
Let's see, Friday, we had AMSD. Dr. Salo and I went to that. And that's the annual, kind of the most exciting, in my opinion, meeting of the year because it's the legislative preview. They bring in all the head honchos of the state, you know, basically to tell us how they're going to fund education. We also, AMSD presents our platform, which is pretty similar to what our platform is, looking like stable, you know, for stable funding, having some type of inflation, you know, tied to inflation, that kind of thing. So they were, three of Terry's colleagues, superintendents, presented each one of those pieces. There's a lot of talk about, you know, the achievement gap and that we're, it's not, not improving and that there really needs to be, you know, some work. I mean, work's happening, but we need some really funding to kind of help make that, you know, we get in process. So it's always an interesting meeting. And then we were able to, it was great, to see the one act play that made state for the first time in 22 years. So we saw, it took me a while. I've never seen Chekhov before. It's Anton Chekhov. It was the wedding. It's 27 minutes long, and it was like they had accents. You know, kids from Minnesota doing Russian accents. And so it was kind of hard to understand for a little bit. But they did a great job. I mean, it was, it was really comical at the end, and it was just really kind of fun to see it. They were super excited, and I think they did really well. So, yeah. Right? I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so different. They don't actually place, but the top performers get, earn a star rating. And we were one of the schools that received that star rating. So they did an excellent job.
Yeah. Super fun. So.
Jonathan?
Pretty short and sweet for me. Really a great visit to Greenwood last week. And, and I'll say great because there's parts of what I saw that are the hard work that has to be done every day and not, it was, it was an unfiltered day, I think would be a good way to put it. Right? And that's important, I think, for us to see. And really got a really good sense of how data is being used to help kids and to monitor progress, not just on a building basis, not just on a classroom basis, on a per-student basis, and how, how important that is. It was a nice visit.
Nothing to report. Michael?
Early Childhood Advisory Committee is meeting at this moment, so I'm sadly missing that. At the community ed meeting last week, they were talking about spring planning, spring-summer 2020 planning status and some upcoming community events that you can watch for, the Dance With Me Ball, With Me Ball, which is very popular, the Kids Family and Home Expo, Career and Job Fair, and the Wellness Expo. Mary and Stacy and I briefly had the opportunity to spend time with the counselors, both at Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks. They invited us in, gave us some background information, visited with us one-on-one, and let us shadow a number of different activities, so, especially being School Counselor Week, that was really helpful for us. And over the last two weeks, I had the opportunity to get to engage a little bit with the PBIS team, and students were being called out for their behavior and kindness and special, special acts they do to include others at both Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks, and it was an amazing experience, so hats off to the teams there as well.
Isabel?
So student council was finally able to have a sigh of relief after a very busy snowball week. We had started snowball week early with coronation on two Thursdays ago, and that one was very successful, and we had a lot of good feedback from that. And then after that would have been our royalty bus tour, and Michael is related to some royalty. Her son Alex was on, on the royalty this year, so that was a lot of fun. And so I was able to go along on the royalty bus tour, and it was a lot of fun seeing all the kids get excited about all the royalty, all the pretty girls in their dresses, and all the guys in their nice little suits, and it was just really fun to see some of the shy kids too kind of come up and say, can we meet them? Can we meet them? And it was, they did awesome, and they were all lovely, and it was just a really great time to kind of get them excited for what's to come, and just it was a nice glimpse into, you know, what's, what's in the future, and what'll come after my generation. And so we had that, and then on Thursday night, we had dodgeball, which was successful, and I think we had about 10 teams. And we always have our championship the next day at the pep fest, which were very, very spirited, and thankfully, nobody was hurt, and nothing, nothing bad happened, it was all in good fun. And our pep fest was very successful, we always split it into two, since we have such a big school. And then our snowball dance itself was really positive, had a lot of great feedback. We had about 500 attend, roughly around there, which is about the same as last year. And last year, we also kind of had a little dip because of the snowstorm. So it was a good week overall, and especially with all the change that we had made, so a lot of sighs of relief after last week.
Thank you. Future events, February 17th is No School for Grades E-12, and the Teacher of the Year Celebration is at Prior Lake High School at 7:15, and I don't have a date.
Same date, on Monday.
On the same date, okay. February 17th, okay. If there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Mary? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Thanks for attending.